Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop, an executive session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday, September 21st, 2010, at 5:35 PM, 5:50 PM, and 6:00 PM, in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A: Discussion Regarding the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation Fiscal Year 2011 Budget.
Do we have the, uh, do we know?
Yes, we do. Honorable City Commission, this is the workshop I usually do prior to approval of the budget by, the review and then a consideration of the B-C-I-C budget by the City Commission. Again, B-C-I-C is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that funds quality-of-life projects in Brownsville. Special election again was held in November of 2001. It was the first of eight propositions that was approved. That proposition was, "Shall the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas be authorized to reduce the existing Section 4A Sales and Use Tax for the promotion and development of new and expanded business enterprises from the rate of one-half of one percent to the rate of one-fourth of one percent and concurrently adopt Section 4B Sales and Use Tax at the rate of one-fourth of one percent to undertake projects such as described in Section 4B of Article 5190.6, including but not limited to land buildings, equipment, facilities, and improvements included in the definition of the term 'project.' Again, that's why in the, usually later in the year, we bring forth various projects. Under Section 2 of Article 5190.6, "Projects for the promotion of professional and amateur athletics and sports, including stadiums, wildparks, auditoriums, projects related to entertainment, convention, tourist and exhibit facilities, amphitheaters, concert halls, and public parks, park facilities, and events, open space improvements, learning centers, and municipal buildings." Those two items and subsequent legislation was removed from being eligible for projects by the state legislature. "Museums and related store, restaurant concessions, and automobile, parking facilities and related area, transportation facilities and related roads, streets and water and sewer facilities, recycling facilities, and projects to promote New York's expanded business enterprises, including public safety facilities, streets and roads, drainage and related improvements, demolition of existing structures, and general improvements that are municipally owned, development or redevelopment of closed military installations, development and expansion of affordable housing, as well as any other improvements or facilities that are related to any of the above projects. Projects required for suitable for the development of water supply facilities or the institutional water conservation programs, and any other project that the board determines will promote new or expanded business enterprises and the maintenance and operation expenses for any of the above projects." Again, in essence, at that point in time, they took the full language of anything that was legally possible at the time for the, for a 4B corporation to perform. Again, this is our board for 2010. At the end of 2010, there will be three of these members that, under the current bylaws, will no longer be eligible, which they would have served their two-year, two terms, two-year terms, which is Commissioner Atkinson, Carlos Cisneros, and Paulita Rico. Again, our mission is to fund quality-of-life projects for Brownsville. On the project funding process, the funding applications and its guidelines are reviewed by the B-C-I-C Board, which they did at this last meeting. They've decided then the applications will be released on September 23rd, 2010, so that they will be available out of the B-C-I-C office. We'll also put them on the website. And the funding applications will be due on December 15th. Typically, after that time, the B-C-I-C Board will review applications for merit, for their merit and reasonable cost. The applications are then recommended for funding. Again, as a 4B corporation, we are required to hold public hearings, so a public hearing will be held, and then applications will be recommended to the City Commission for approval. And just to give a quick overview of all the different entities that have been funded over the years, we've got Boys and Girls Club for over 140,000, the Brownsville Botanical Gardens for 42, the Brownsville Community Foundation for 58, the Brownsville Historical Association and their various locations at 238,584, Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts 1.4, that's an example of a project that was funded over multiple years. In fact, that was three years' time. Brownsville Tennis Association 64114, Camille Players, 58,000. And again, a lot of these are multiple smaller projects within, that were done by various organizations. Children's Museum, 1 million, again, that was funded over three years' time. With the City of Brownsville, there's been promotional items such as the City Manager Golf Classic, the Brownsville Day at the Capitol, and United Brownsville. City of Brownsville Historic Battlefield Trail, that was another one that was funded over multiple years. City of Brownsville Bus, including both the Park Plaza and the Battlefield Enhancement. Health Department, Dean Porter Park Retaining Wall, the Bark Park, the Biggest Loser Challenge, COB Heritage Department, the Architectural Guidelines, which they're currently working on, the Fire Department, to restore the old fire truck, the COB Parks Department, over $4 million in various parks throughout the city, which includes park improvements, even playground equipment, from playground equipment, a turf, to fencing, maintenance equipment. Then Planning Department, 170 for the Imagine Brownsville. CAF Museum, 112, which is actually the reparation of the city-owned facility that they have, the roof. Foundation for Brownsville Sports, 20,000. Gladys Portez Zoo, 321,000. Again, you can see multiple projects over the years. The Gorgas Science Foundation, 14,000. Healthy Communities, the Environmental Committee, 15,000. Keep Brownsville Beautiful, 20,000. The Multite purpose Center, 75,000. Palau Alto National Park, 20,000. Pan American Round Tables, 77,000. Sable Palm, 75,000. South Texas Film, 15. West Brownsville, Little League, 100,000. Again, so you can see that there's a multitude of projects that have been funded over the years by the corporation. We get the revenue from the quarter cent sales tax, and again, what we do is, there's a projection made between October 2010 and September 2011. We follow the same budget year as the City of Brownsville does. We have historically always used very conservative estimates because, again, the, the sales tax revenue can change over the years. In up to 2007, we use the 2008 actuals. From 2008 to present, including this current budget, we're using the actuals of 2005. There is a two-month lapse in our laps in the deposits due to the process it takes in order for the collection of the sales tax and the processing of the sales tax by the Comptroller's Office and returning them to the city. And the fiscal year 2011 project reimbursements will be, will begin in 2011, October, although in many times, the organizations do have their contracts. For those that have already been approved by City Commission, we enter into contract. They are reimbursement-based contracts, and many times, they go ahead and start the project in advance of that. Again, you can see here the monthly sales tax revenue, or monthly sales tax history for B-C-I-C. You will note that in 2002, what happened for the fiscal year 2003, they actually had basically almost a year and a half of revenues when they first started the first funding period. This is the sales tax comparison, again, between 2009 and 2010. So even though there has been a reduction of sales tax, we are still within what we do for our projected planning budget for B-C-I-C. If we look at a comparison here, I'm just showing 2009, 2010, and 2011 for the total revenues. We use, again, 3.3 million. The administrative expenses, 250,000, is the contract that the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation enters into the city to provide administrative, administrative services. We also have the contingency promo amount, which for 2011, it's been reduced to 100,000. So total projects then, or the project, the amount left for projects are 2.9. So if we do the project budget breakdown, what you'll see for the application funding, that amount has increased to 348.10. That service is 1.4. The CO to the City of Brownsville is 371. The event hosting phase has been 170,000, and the Brownsville Sports Park maintenance contract has gone from 774 to 550. Again, the, the sports maintenance costs, what that does, covers personnel, utility costs, which is estimated at being about 113 to 80. Security, materials, and supplies, the amount that it has been reduced by is by the revenues that are being received. Again, then you can see the different budgets, the budget amounts in the pie chart where 89% goes toward projects. In 2010, we had a little bit of difference because of more funding going into contingency with the concern of what was going on with sales tax. And so for 2011, then less funds have been allocated to contingency, and that's where the, you see the increase for the project part of it. And so then this is just a spreadsheet of the actual budget itself.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
I think it's pretty, it's quicker than years before, so it's even better.
Thanks, Doc. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Estella, if we may, I'd like to start the regular meeting so that we can get the veterans out and so we can move the number 16 up. I know that we've got a large contingency, and I don't want to have them wait through the executive session.
Second.
So if I can have a motion?
Second.
Motion to the second. So let's go ahead, and all in favor?
Aye.
If you can. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas, I pledge.
On to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And do we have a pastor? Pastor Burke?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much for the many blessings you've blessed us with here in Brownsville. Lord, as we wrestle with the budget and the things that we need, the things that we don't have, help us to remember what you have blessed us with. Lord, I ask you to help each of us to truly listen to each other tonight, to the point of actually understanding each other. Help us to respect each other, and let the outcome of this meeting be good for the City of Brownsville. Anoint each of our leaders tonight to have clear direction from you and to receive the comments from each other. In Jesus's name, amen.
So Estella, if you could read number 16, which I believe it has to do with the veterans.
Action item 16, Consideration in Action to Adopt Resolution 2010-64 in Support of Veterans Alliance Efforts to Bring a Veterans Affairs Hospital to the Lower Rio Grande Valley.
Mayor Proten, I'd make the motion to approve resolution in support of Veterans Hospital in the valley.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for this.
To the members of the City Commission in Brownsville, thank you and God bless this great country. I'm Homer Gallegos, and I'm the chairman of the Veterans Alliance. The alliance is not an organization, but a committee that represents all the major veterans organizations, and with me are some of them, if they will stand up. I've got some of the members of the Purple Heart, some of the members of the American Legion, some of the members of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Veterans of Foreign Wars. Our ex-PUW's couldn't make it with us today, but we have a lot of members from the Catholic War Veterans, from all the organizations. Our goal here is strictly to promote the awareness that we have men and women constantly serving our country from this great valley, but we don't have a hospital. Our nearest hospital is in San Antonio, and right now, we have Iraqi and Iraqi, and Afghanistan vets serving the National Guard and the reserves that are coming back, and there are no facilities for them. The World War II vet is dying at 1,200 or more veterans a day. They will never see the reality of a hospital. At least the Vietnam veterans that are here today are pushing for this issue, that the younger veterans may benefit. But throughout the valley, we're getting a lot of support from a lot of municipalities with resolutions and commitments. So with that, we thank you, and Tony Cordova with the Purple Heart will also like to address the commissioners.
Sir, before you stop, I don't know if the other veterans would like to come up, and if y'all would like to get on. We do have TV, you can be on for this presentation. There's more than enough room. We appreciate your service.
Military, tuck it in, guys.
Y'all want to step down, if you can?
Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Tony, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your attention, your considerations. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could you?
Thank you very much.
No, could you?
Okay.
Could you read number seven?
If, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I send you, some of you, an email regarding a new effort that we're even going to launch, trying to get a hospital, but I just got the bad news today, that Senator Reed did not accept our rider on the defense bill. So that's a moot issue right now, and hopefully that the senator can get together with us and we develop some different type of strategy. We won't cut and run. We will work hard until we get a hospital for all our veterans. And they say you can take that to the bank.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
If I can, it's come to my attention that I think now that we've started jumping out of space, that they want to do 17 now, if I can get a motion on 17 as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Estella, can you read 17?
Item number 17, Consideration in Action on Ordinance Number 2010-1532, authorizing the issuance of City of Brownsville, Texas Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2020, 2010, I'm sorry, providing for payment of the principal of and interest on the bonds by a lean on and pledge of the net revenues of the system, providing the terms and conditions of such bonds, and resolving other matters incident and relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of such bonds, including the approval and distribution of an official statement stipulating the terms and conditions for the issuance of additional revenue bonds on a parity therewith, authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchasing contract, a purchase contract, and an escrow deposit letter complying with the requirements of the depository trust company, delegating the authority to the city manager, and certain members of the City of Brownsville Public Utility Board staff to execute certain documents relating to the sale of the bonds, enacting other provisions incident and related to the subject and purpose of this ordinance, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor Proten, Commissioners, my name is Sandra Garcia, Chief Financial Officer for Brownsville PUB. We are going to ask that this item be tabled. Although it provides a very favorable savings as refunding, we are going to be seeking guidance from our financial advisor and bond counsel, Estran Ojosa and Full Brian Jaworski, as to how to proceed with this refunding in a way that doesn't create any conflict with the city transfer study that y'all requested yesterday. So we're going to take that into consideration and try to insert some flexibility in here in the event that we see some recommendations from Estran Ojosa.
Put it table.
We'll be coming back at a later date.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, does anybody want to take up the presentation, so we get the presentations out and go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Estella, can you do the first proclamation?
First proclamation, first proclamation is Mr. Rene Capistran.
Stand over there. Yeah. Charlie. Let him hold it down.
All right. We have to be, to put this on the agenda because I think Rene Capistran has exhibited everything that it takes to be a volunteer for the City of Brownsville through United Way, through many efforts that he's been involved in. He's, he's the reason why the Dallas Cowboys come to Brownsville. He's the reason why a lot of these kids who will probably never see a Cowboy game will be able to go to the sports park and enjoy seeing some of these athletes over there that come down to partake in, letting the kids realize that the Dallas Cowboys are behind their growth and their participation in youth sports and education. So this is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Rene Capistran for his community involvement. Whereas Rene Capistran has worked long and hard to ensure that the children of our community are afforded every opportunity, constantly offering encouragement to local high school students to stay in school, graduate, and explore higher education. And whereas, as an employee-owner of Spaglass Construction, Rene Capistran is in a position to share his time and expertise with the community, and in particular, and in particular the youth of our community. And whereas Rene Capistran often shares his construction experiences with students who are interested in vocational construction occupations, and often takes time to lecture at the Architectural Department at the University of Texas at Brownsville. And whereas Rene Capistran and Spaglass in July of 2009 organized a United Way Football Camp, and this first-time event became the largest event of its kind in the state of Texas. And whereas in October of 2009, Rene Capistran and Spaglass led the charge to raise more than $8,500 for the fifth annual Spaglass Fishing Tournament. And whereas in April of 2010, Rene Capistran and Spaglass organized a Dallas Cowboy Charity Basketball Game for the Brownsville Crime Stoppers, and followed that up in, followed that up in August of 2010 with the Cowboy Legends Football Camp to benefit the Brownsville Youth League and the Cameron County Children's Advocacy Center. And whereas Rene Capistran continues to serve the community on a number of boards and commissions which benefit the people, and in particular, the youth of South Texas. And for this, we are grateful and offer our thanks. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize Rene Capistran for his record of community service and for his interest in the youth of our city. Done on this day, September 21st, 2010, signed by Patamata and the rest of the City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, City Commissioners. First, let me start by saying that I'm humbled, and I appreciate the proclamation. No, but it is Spaglass and all the employees should be thanking you for your leadership. We take great pride in being part of the community. This is a way that we are corporate citizens. It is all about tomorrow's youth. What we today, what we do today defines who we are tomorrow. We take great pride in being fabric of our communities. And again, I thank you for your leadership. Thank you for letting us partner up with you in these events, the City of Brownsville, the Brownsville Sports Park, and the Brownsville Independent School District. On behalf of Spaglass Contractors, thank you for the proclamation, and God bless.
The following is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, declaring October 3rd through the 9th, 2010 as fire prevention week in our city. And whereas the City of Brownsville is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes, our people, are at the greatest risk to fire with nearly 3,000 people killed each year in home fires in the U.S. And whereas roughly two-thirds of home fire deaths resulted from fires in which no smoke alarms and no working smoke alarms were present, even though working smoke alarms cut by half the chance dying in a reported fire. And whereas the National Fire Prevention Association recommends at least one smoke alarm in every level of the home, including the basement, all sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms. And whereas informing the public about the importance of smoke alarm installation and maintenance serves as, as an essential step toward increasing the public safety from house, from home fires, and Brownsville's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire deaths and injuries through prevention and proper education. And whereas the Fire Prevention Week 2010 theme, Smoke Alarms, A Sound You Can Live With, actively works to motivate Brownsville residents to implement smoke alarm recommendations in their homes. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby declare October 3rd through the 9th, 2010, to be Fire Prevention Week in, on, and in our city, and further urge all our citizens to protect their homes and families by heeding the potentially life-saving message of Fire Prevention Week 2010, done this 21st day of September, 2010, and it's signed by Patamata Mayor and the rest of the City Commission. Thank you.
One more.
Commissioners, I appreciate this proclamation. One good thing about October coming up, we'll be spending fire prevention presentations through the schools all month, and we'll also be doing a contest for fire drills for the schools to promote fire prevention and hopefully help the citizens of Brownsville. So we thank you.
The first lady, when she became the first lady, was looking for an agenda, and she settled on a very important one that certainly she, she spoke quite well when she, when she was asked, "Why was it that you picked this topic?" She said, "Because there is a solution." And that is the topic of prevention of childhood obesity. It is sad that children born in the year 2000 and beyond will not live as long as their parents did, in all likelihood, because of rising rates of obesity. So it is the first lady's intention, together with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the City of Brownsville, to do everything that we can to prevent childhood obesity and improve our rates for our children. So this proclamation is to, from the City Commission to designate Brownsville as a "Let's Move" city, whereas obesity has reached epidemic levels in our country. Whereas obesity has reached epidemic levels in our country beginning in childhood and Brownsville is no exception with rates of obesity among the highest in Hispanic communities in the United States. And whereas the First Lady, Michelle Obama, started a Let's Move campaign with the goal of solving the challenge of childhood obesity within a generation and if successful, children born today will be at healthy weights when they reach childhood. So the Let's Move initiative is a comprehensive approach to engage the many sectors that reach children, including schools, parents, families, community leaders, governments and chefs. And whereas it is with great enthusiasm, the City of Brownsville joins the First Lady and the Let's Move campaign to make a difference in the lives of our families and most especially of our children. And in keeping with the Imagine Brownsville Long Range Plan, we pledge to fight for our children. And whereas we have begun with initiatives such as the Brownsville Farmers Market, the Biggest Loser Challenge, the City of Brownsville Wellness Program, a Wellness Prevention Task Force, and our future plans include a Brownsville Community Garden, educational activities at area parks, including Linear Park adjacent to the Parks and Recreation Headquarters and more. The following pledges for everyone to take in the audience as well as the commission, please repeat after me. We believe every kid has the right to a healthy childhood.
We believe every kid has the right to a healthy childhood.
We cannot let this be the first generation in our history to grow up less healthy than their parents.
We cannot let this be the first generation in our history to grow up less healthy than our parents.
The ingredients, better food plus more activity are clear.
The ingredients, better food, plus more activity are clear.
Let's Move isn't just noble, it's a necessity.
Let's Move isn't just noble, it's a necessity.
It's not just a slogan, it's our responsibility.
It's not just a slogan, it's our responsibility.
Are you with us?
Are you with us?
Then let's move.
Let's move.
Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate Brownsville as a Let's Move City. Done this twenty-first day of September, two thousand and ten, signed by the Mayor and the City Commission.
Honorable, uh, Mayor Potem and Commissioners, I, in, um, in speaking today to the Board of National Health Commission, they wanted me to state that, uh, on behalf of the White House, the Health and Human Services, March Petty will be here at the October fourth event to accept the proclamation as her designee for Michelle Obama. Furthermore, um, I've been contacted today by the Robert J. Wood Foundation and they will be doing a follow-up story regarding the Let's Move campaign. So I look forward to seeing as many of you at the October fourth event. And, uh, Mr. Reyna Sensis, congratulations to the city. And Ms. March Petty will be here herself to congratulate the city on October fourth. Thank you.
Item number four is one last presentation, Employee of the Month.
Mayor Potem, members of the commission, we're gonna do our Employee of the Month a little late this year. And, uh, please help me welcome Anthony Laulum. Anthony has worked for, for us at the City of Brownsville, at our, at the Brownsville International Airport for the last ten years. His responsibility is maintenance of the, and, uh, working with maintenance and in charge of maintenance at the airport, uh, terminal area. And as you know, that's, that's the center point of our airport. The airport has won various, uh, awards over the last few years. And, and, and part of the, uh, description in the award is the fact that our terminal is one of the, one of the nicest kept terminals, uh, you know, for an airport of our size. He is dedicated, uh, he is, uh, loyal, ethical. He helps, uh, with, with a lot of the training when we have new employees at the airport. Uh, plus, plus we like the fact that, uh, in situations like yesterday or Sunday when we had a huge issue with, uh, the storm, as you, as you may know, with the water damage and things like that. He is able to get to the airport without any excuses, though that's an area of the city that's, uh, prone to flooding and things like that. And he was there for us and, uh, helped, uh, with a lot of the issues in relation to the airport. And the airport maintained, uh, uh, being open for our, I mean, our public during that, during that time. Uh, as, uh, Employee of the Month, he is eligible for Employee of the Year at our banquet in December. And, uh, of course, he gets what we've been awarding this year as the watch. Uh, it's all black, Anthony Laulum and, uh, Employee of the Month for, uh, September two thousand ten. And recognition of outstanding service rendered to the residents of the city of Brownsville. And of course, the Employee of the Month for black. I just wanna thank you all for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Executive.
Executive.
Executive item A, discussion pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-two of the Texas Government Code regarding purchase of the following properties struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale held on August the third, two thousand and ten.
Mayor Potem, I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we'll be right back.
Excuse me.
What?
Still ready?
Yes. Action on items discussed in executive session. Item A, consideration and action to adopt resolutions number twenty ten dash zero sixty-five through twenty ten dash zero seventy-six. Approving bids received from a tax resale held on August the third, twenty ten, for the following properties. Lot eight, block thirty-two, East Brownsville addition, third section. Track thirty-six, lot one twenty- one sixty-nine, Valley Sound addition, Cameron County, Texas. Track thirty-five, lot one sixty-seven, Valley Sound addition. Track twenty-eight, lot two hundred, Valley Sound addition. Track twenty-seven, lot one ninety-nine, Valley Sound addition. Track twenty-four, lot two twenty-nine, Valley Sound addition. Track fifteen, lot two hundred and ten, Valley Sound addition. Zero point ten acre more or less situated in surveys twenty-one and twenty-four subdivision B of Bradis track in share nineteen. Espidi to Santo Grant, Cameron County, Texas. Track twenty-one, lot one seventy-six, Valley Sound addition. Track thirty-two, lot one seventy-five, Valley Sound addition. Track nineteen, lot one thirty-four, Valley Sound addition. Track eighteen, lot one thirty-three, Valley Sound addition, all in Cameron County, Texas.
Please approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If we can move on to the mayor's report. And just very briefly, obviously Mayor Amada's not here, but I would like to take the time to thank the city staff and Public Works for all of their hard work during the recent flooding. I'd also like to thank P U V for all of their efforts as well. It has been a very wet summer and everybody's help and diligence has has paid off. We've gotten through this with the fourth tropical storm hurricane. And and thank you all. You all do a lot with very, very little.
Thank you all.
I believe Mr. Atkinson has the next report.
All I'm gonna say, I'll keep it brief because it looks like we have a lot of items. It's just on Portway Acres, I know there is a problem with flooding over there. And I'd like to thank Public Works and all the city staff that assisted out there and trying to relieve some of the water over there. Like Commissioner Trani said, these these employees that we have are are amazing. You know, constantly short staff, but they managed to stay out there no matter how long it takes to try to get relief for these people. Portway Acres, I know other parts of my district kind of flooded. I know we had a little bit of flooding in Rio de Janeiro, but that everything drained right away. And I think I get more compliments from people that the city has a good drainage system. Anybody who experiences seven to twelve inches of rain in two hours is gonna, we're gonna flood. That's just anywhere, but the it's how fast things are draining. And mostly, I say ninety percent of Brownsville drained super quick. And it's just those key little areas in our districts that that we find that that we need to fix. And and there are being fixed and they're being looked at. And we may have to write grants to help get the funding to to fix some of these areas, low lying areas, but we're working on it. And I hope people at home believe that that's what we're doing and that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, may I make one comment? If I could, it'd be very great.
Sure.
This is regarding tomorrow's City of Brownsville Bring Your Own Bag Day. If any of you find yourself going to the store, the mall, we're encouraging all residents to bring your own bag, your reusable bag to the to the to the stores. Most of the commission will be out and about at one of the stores, an H E B or Walmart. I encourage you all to participate whether it's thirty minutes or an hour of your time. It'd be great to talk to customers as well as store managers and just again promote the ordinance and promote the use of reusable bags. So this is going on all day tomorrow at any convenience store, supermarket, large, small, the mall. We encourage you all to come out and participate.
Thank you, Commissioner Camadillo. Stella, if we go on to consent agenda items?
I will be with you in just a minute on that one.
We want to make sure that we table five A.
Five A? Okay.
That agenda was already prepared, which is why that item is on there.
So then I need a motion to approve everything except for five A, is that correct?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can we move on to boards and commissions?
Item six, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Brownsville Urban Systems Transit Advisory Committee.
Commission, this is the remaining vacancy that we have on our bus transit advisory committee. There is a reappointment of Mr. Alejandro Fuentes, our chair. And in your package you have two additional applicants that are interested.
And I believe that I had a, I believe I had one appointment and for my appointment I was going to propose Ramon Betas.
Second.
I think he had an application on file as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings?
Public hearings, item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty ten dash twelve oh two dash H. To amend ordinance number twenty ten dash twelve oh two dash G of chapter forty-two, article three, section forty-two dash one oh one rates for city of city emergency medical services.
Honorable Mayor Protem and commissioners, we're here to ask for an increase in the waiting time per hour fee from seventy-five dollars to to a hundred dollars. This will help us increase about twenty-five percent on the on our on our cost on that. Because of the rates of the firefighters for standby, this will help oversee some of that costs.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Well, actually, this public hearing, does anybody have any comment? Motion closed?
Please close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, this is an action item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty ten dash fourteen sixty-eight A. To amend chapter three forty-eight zoning of the City of Brownsville zoning code by amending article one in general, section three forty-eight dash two definitions.
Good evening commissioners, thank you for your time. Changing this definition is, what the definition is, by the way, is simply the definition of the downtown boundary area. And that is delineated by the moving green line. Surrounding the white area. That's basically what you and I would call our downtown business district. And the only thing that that does, that that means, that definition means, is it it exempts that area from the parking requirement and the landscape ordinance. In order to enhance the chances of success of of our entertainment district, working with planning, we've decided that that we should expand it just slightly because of some of the larger buildings that could be potential restaurants and nightclubs that are in that yellow area. So still trying to stay out of most of the residential area, it's just a slight expansion. Keep in mind that that green line was placed there twenty-two years ago. So this is the first change in twenty-two years to that line. So we ask for your support on this because we already have a few properties that would be favorably affected for the for our entertainment district within that yellow district, within that yellow area.
This is a public hearing, any comment?
Please close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is an action item?
Please approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Downtown thanks you.
Thank you, Peter.
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty ten dash fifteen thirty-one. To amend the official zoning atlas by including properties as noted in exhibit A.
Honorable Mayor Protem and honorable commissioners, with this item here, the area shaded in red, what we're doing here tonight is to identify the properties in the O one hundred residential office district. This district went through the Plan Zoning Commission and was approved unanimously. I ask for your support in approving this ordinance.
This is a public hearing, are there any comments?
Please close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is an action item?
Please approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty ten dash zero twenty to rezone from dwelling Z to general retail G. Lots one through three and ten through thirteen out of block one oh five of Almito original town townsite located at seventy-eight fifty Old Highway seventy-seven in Brownsville.
As you can see shaded on the map is the property in question. Here they would want to have a grocery store. You have the Expressway and and the Friendly's Road located there on the map. The Plans Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this recommendation. Ask for your approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing, does anybody have any comments? I'd have a motion to close?
Please close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is an action item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next.
Item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty ten dash zero twenty-two dash S to allow an apartment specific use, apartment A specific use in a dwelling G for apartment for lot nineteen, block one of Las Vegas Reforma subdivision located near FM eight oh two and McAllen Road.
Honorable Mayor Protem, honorable commissioners, this is the property shaded in red. You have FM eight oh two, you have Gilson Reforma on on your left, and the green shaded is apartment use. In this specific case, they would, it's a specific use for fourteen units. The Plans Zoning Commission did not approve this application and is due an appeal. I believe the applicant is here and would like to comment on this project.
Okay. Anybody for or against? Okay, come forward.
Who's the who's the owner, Ben?
And how many people do we have that are gonna speak?
Ben, just Ben, just for clarification, these are fourteen apartments or these are fourteen townhouses or these are?
Well, they're they're like townhouses, but it's not a townhouse because it doesn't have a common wall. So they're single and they're they're like this.
Fourteen of those.
And you wanna put the side plan? Fourteen of those and and they're separated, there's some side guards, front guards. But but they're the the lot size is smaller, so here it is. And it's fourteen of what they proposed.
Since we have so many people that are against this, can we have a representative for those who are against the or the proposal? And then somebody who is for it so that we can hear both sides?
Judge?
But let's hear the those that are present first, their representative first, so I guess that would be, who is that going to be?
Mr. Garza?
Against?
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, and member commissioners, I'm Robert Garza and I'm one of the opponents and along with these other folks are with me. My wife, David Merrill, Mr. Chavez, and also Mr. Peña, we all reside in this area. But I I believe the it was denied in planning and zoning, so in fact, they didn't even decide on it, they just let it die. And so it's an appeal by them, so I don't know how you wanna address it, whether you want me to go further.
Well, I guess the question I, the question I have, are you completely against any development or are there certain terms that you're looking for?
Yeah, no, we are not, in fact, we've said that already before the planning and zoning. We are not opposed to them developing this property. In fact, this issue was brought forth before the commission or almost got brought forth before the commission back in two thousand and four. This piece of property has been laid idle. It used to belong to another individual and they were supposed to build because we all met, our community had a meeting. We all worked on an agreement. We worked as far as the parameters were concerned, as far as the number of units. I guess to put fourteen units in this area would be too much. This is a property that's located across Living Way Church. And which is two acres and I believe about half of that, half of that, you know, there's about half an acre in the in the water in the resaca. We don't object, we don't object to them building homes. I mean, we agreed, we worked hard. Victor Gonzalez, Dr. Gonzalez was there at that meeting. We had, we had the the owner, the person that worked in this project, at least met with all of us, we met at the Elk Lodge, the old Elk Lodge. And we worked out all these conditions and and for this for this project and nothing ever was done. So now they come in and say they wanna build fourteen units. And we have objection to that because that's too many. I believe the, if I can just.
Where do you where do you get that information where ten's okay but fourteen's not? What do you have, do you come up with any statistical data that may?
It's just a, it's kind of, I don't know if you've been, if you know this area, commissioners? It's very narrow. I mean, it's, I mean, it's like, I mean, you look at look at this area and that was one of the big concerns that we raised the last time. And if I can just have a minute to show you the, because we went through all this a lot last time. In fact, there was one thing that we did push before the before we came to the commissions. We we got into an agreement and I meet a builders who owned the property.
Now, is there an alternate site plan?
Yeah, well, this is a revise, this is what they revised it to build in this particular property. This is off, right off of eight oh two, across the street is Living Way Church and there's a lot of the the high school there, junior high and whatnot. And so this is really close to their that area. And we live right next to it and that's just what they agreed to at that point in time. We all agreed to, we signed off on an agreement. I can't find the view, but I have a letter recognizing that there's an agreement. And so, how does this work? Okay. Right, the property was because it was too close to eight oh two, so they had, they put a gate right here which made it two cars so they can park and not be blocking eight oh two. We also got an agreement that they would not park their cars, that people that live here would not park on eight oh two because it's too congested and it's dangerous to the children there. They also had an area where they would at least be able to turn around, they had additional parking spaces back here. And then, of course, they would fix the resaca because there's a resaca back here. And so with this area like this, we were able to resolve the agreement, each entered into an agreement back then. We do not have a problem with them developing this property. In fact, we want them to develop it and build homes there.
Mr. Gattuso.
But fourteen is just a bit much.
Sorry to interrupt, but that agreement was with a was with was was with the previous owner, correct?
Well.
Have you all looked at this scenario but with the future or the the current developer right now?
The at the planning and zone, at the before, we came before the planning and zoning, that was one of the suggestions that was made. I mean, we're we're here.
Was it put in as a specific use, Robert, or was it was it put in as a specific use?
It was put as a specific use back then.
Okay.
And because the guy, the builder, Mr. um, Mr. Pereira had agreed that it would be for a specific use because it's residential. This property where it's at is residential. It's not zone commercials, not zone apartment or anything like that, it's a residential area.
Judge, if I could interrupt you for just one second. Ben, could you clarify for us? As far as that specific use was, when it was handled, did the special use include ten built, ten units? When it was done with Mr. Pereira?
Our records show twelve.
Twelve, yes.
Okay, so at the time that this was done, how many years ago?
Two thousand and four.
The city commission approved it for twelve.
Six years ago? And so that was for twelve?
It was not approved.
And?
It was not, I'm sorry, it was not approved for twelve. It was what they did in planning and zoning is they said, well, go ahead and approve for twelve. We filed a notice of appeal, we appealed that decision to the city commission. And before we came to the city commission, we met with the builder at that time and in fact, I have a letter from him where he asked us to take it off the meeting, that we never went to a city commission meeting because we've worked it out and built ten units.
Okay, so what I understand, Judge Gattuso, is at this point, you had an agreement with the prior owner developer. That person has now changed, you have a new entity or it's the same entity?
Well, that's kind of questionable because the owners of the property was Mr. Pereira and also of Mr. Trevino. And the application that was filed by for the builder is Arturo Trevino is still listed as the owner.
It's a different Arturo Trevino?
He's still listed, my wife.
I understand.
She's still listed as the same owner as Arturo Trevino. And the representative of the person that's gonna do the investments or buy this thing is is listed as this Tres Rosas Investments LLC, I don't know where they're from. And they're the ones that are gonna, they're the ones that are seeking approval so they can go ahead and build these 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 units, these fourteen units.
And they were denied at the?
At the planning and zoning, they didn't even, it didn't even come up for a vote, they refused to even put it up for a vote, so it was denied completely, I mean.
Ken, I have a question.
Ken.
Do we know, why was it denied, Ben, at planning?
It was not denied, it was moved. The doctor, there was discussion and there was no motion. The the chair did call for a motion to approve or deny and there was no motion. So that did not.
Mayor, I was gonna call the developer, I don't know if you wanna take over the meeting?
Sure, this is developer here? City secretary, could I get an agenda for you?
We have one right there for you.
I got it right here. Please, please state your name.
Jorge Alvarez with Tres Rosas Investments.
Michael Garza, a local contractor, also involved in the project. Jorge is the supervisor for the Tres Rosas development. There is a development similar to this that was built on, I believe it's on McAllen and and Gilson Road, similar to this, that's what's gonna be developed here. Again, the development that they're looking at, they're looking at fourteen homes. These ten homes here, if you look at the square footage of the houses that were allocated back in two thousand and four. The allocation for each of the houses, the square footage is larger, it's a larger home that was being allocated now. I don't have the exact numbers, but.
It's run out, it was meant for sixteen houses, but it was, at the end it was fifteen houses, it was one block, it was two blocks.
And in this case, you're probably looking anywhere between twenty-eight hundred square feet prior to to maybe what, twenty-four hundred square feet now? So if you look at the square footage between the ten and the sixteen, the square footage is the same. The only thing is they're closer together, they're not sideways like that. The project in itself, if you could put the project back on the one that we have. If you look at, these are sideways, the driveways are to the side of the house, the entrances are to the side of the house. And the ones on McAllen and Gilson that are already developed, they're all facing the front of the street, which is what this is. Your garage is towards the front and each one of them is spaced out so that each one of them has its own front yard. Of course, these homes are two-story homes and they're completely furnished. Most of these homes are already pre-sold to investors coming from Mexico. Again, the development that was set up in Gilson and McAllen started about a year and a half ago and it's completely gone again to investors from Mexico. This is a gated community and they're looking for the security, you know?
Mike, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
The developer bought this land knowing it was for single-family residents?
Actually, it's under contract now. The reason that we had gone to the P and C board was to see if we could get this project done. It's a feasibility study and the P and C board abstained from voting and tabled the issue. Again, if if, again, this is an investor coming from south. The original owner of Tres Rosas is from Mexico City and.
Original owner's from Mexico City?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but my 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 question is this. You have a very nice, high-value gated community right next to it. I forget what the name is, okay?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about three hundred thousand to over half a million dollar homes.
Yes, sir.
Then you talk about the judge here who has a very nice home next to it and all these development. It's prime residential property on a resaca.
Yes.
Right, on a resaca? So this this owner from Mexico City that owns it knows this to be a single-family, because I mean, he bought it. He bought it as a single-family, so I'm sure the intent was a single-family.
Yes.
Now, you're looking to change the zoning through us and and disturb the the.
The zoning would be the same, the only thing we're asking for is more construction.
But you're gonna have multifamily, it's not, it's not the same.
No, it's 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 single-family dwelling, two-story houses, just like it is on Gilson and McAllen, that's how I keep going back to that.
Fourteen.
Only difference is we're asking for four, instead of the the ten that they're, we're asking for fourteen.
But it's not a single-family.
They're single-family homes, they're they're houses.
So how big are the lots gonna be?
They're, I believe, what the size of the lot, Joe? It's two acres, but individual lots like are fifty by a hundred and fifty?
So you see, it is a multifamily, it's not a single-family because i- if it were a single-family, the criteria would be different to where you'd have to meet the requirements for a certain lot size.
Let me say something real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Garza, I think the whole issue here, I don't think what y'all are talking about is it's a moot issue because they're okay with the houses there, the townhomes there, they're just concerned about how many. So they want fourteen and y'all are okay with ten.
Well, if I may interject.
Would you be okay with just doing ten or twelve?
Well, see, that's where I, that's where I'm going with. If I could ask, if I could just bend this, what is the opinion of 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 Sony? What what is Sony recommend? What does your office recommend?
No. Wait a second, we're we're the ones that are gonna make the decision here. Let me ask the judge. Are you okay, are you okay? Let me ask the judge. Let me ask the judge, are you okay with ten units? Judge, I I'm surprised because this is a single-family zoning.
Well, Mayor, we we don't want, we don't have a problem with development, it's like I told the commission.
You don't have a problem with what?
With development.
Okay.
So I've been urging these folks to come in and do that. I mean, they leave the grass over, they talk, we have grass all over, we want development in this property, we don't have a problem with that. But we spent a lot of time, the last time we worked before the the planning and zoning, we didn't even get to the city commission. We spent a lot of time with the owner back then that was going to build this property. He had, he proposed twelve and he went from fourteen to twelve and then we finally arrived at a figure that we thought was feasible.
Which was what?
The ten.
Which was a ten.
And we had no problem with that. And we've told these folks, I've given them the paperwork, and they said, look, we have no problem with you doing that. However, this little area there in front of eight oh two, it's just gonna be a very dangerous situation for for the for the area there. As it is, we're gonna get a lot more traffic, not because of the traffic now to the high school, but Mayor, I've been finding the, I've been living, I've lived in this property since nineteen, I bought it in nineteen eighty-five. I built my home back in nineteen eighty-six. I have fought, and I'm, I said, the whole community in there have fought continuously to keep this area the best-looking property, a residential area that it should be. Where Living Way was, they used to have an H and H store. And they wanted to reopen it, we had to fight that all over before they were healed. Because they wanted to come and and cook meat there and everything, and we took on, I mean, we took on, but we.
That was in the nineties.
Yep. And we fought, we fought very hard. We fought very hard for this community to stay the way it is. Beautiful area, we love this area, it's been very good to us from as far as the families concerned. But we have no problem with progress. We they, we want them to develop this property, but we feel that what they, this this picture that they've drawn to us and said, we wanna put fourteen houses in there or here as it is. We, they, we want them to develop this property, but we feel that the, what they, this, this picture that they've drawn to us and said, we want to put fourteen houses in there, or here as it is, doesn't tell me anything. The other one we had to go through, we went through a lot of detail. And so we're asking the commission to not approve the, uh, obviously not to approve this, and to allow the, for the decision that the planning and zoning did, which they took no vote on this issue, so it died. To allow and to continue with that.
Let me ask you.
Mayor, may I?
Commissioner, come here.
Judge, I, I, everything you have said and, and the plans and the drawings, you know, it's reminiscent of my Alton Gore residence and, and all the different opportunities they've come before the commission on the issues that they've come up with. And I think this is an ideal situation, Mr. Garza, for you, Mike Garza, um, and for the folks you represent, because they've actually come forward with a plan. And they've actually said, you know what, we've done our homework. Can we, can we make something happen? Can we make it work? Can we have a compromise? And I think that's, that's what they're asking for. Granted, I understand reducing that number from fourteen to ten is a, is a significant issue in terms of the cost and, you know, and, and the return on investment. And, you know, if that was my money, I, I, you know, I'd be very, very cautious with it. But to make things work and to move forward, you know, I, I would ask, I would hope that you would, you all would kind of consider this as a viable option. You know, if it's not angled, if it's straight, that's fine. You, you all determine that, but I think to, to kind of have some consensus on that number. You know, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's worthy of what the group has done, and, and it's point-blank saying, they don't, they do want you all there. They do want something to happen. It's just how it, how it happens is, I think, what they want to work with you all on.
Well, let me say this. Um, I'm a little concerned, uh, as to the development more than what the zoning allows right now as it is. That's what I'm, my concern is. Because the zoning is strictly for single-family, and it protects the integrity of that whole neighborhood.
It is single-family.
Well, no, it's not. You're multifamily there in the same, same lot.
It's your opinion.
It's not, sir. I'm an appraiser.
He just told you it was.
He's wrong.
He's wrong?
He's wrong. Yes, he is wrong. I speak with authority. I could tell you. But let, let, let me tell you this.
You might sit in your.
I do speak with authority. I'm an appraiser. I know the difference between single-family and multifamily, and what's allowed and not allowed, and the highest best use of that type of property. I know what I'm talking about. What I'm saying is, the integrity of, of the neighborhood i- i- is, 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 um, could be adversely impacted by putting too many homes in, 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 in a lot that size, okay? And also the criteria of the, the type of development, the, the value of the development. Because, I mean, you don't want, not that there's anything wrong.
The cost of each home is gonna be two hundred and fifty dollars.
Excuse me, sir.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A place for low-income housing, but that could easily turn into low-income housing if we approve this. Now, let, let me say, my question, what goes through my mind is this. If the investor from Mexico City knew that he, this was single-family, and the developer is looking for building a multifamily development, why doesn't he get land that is zoned for multifamily? I mean, that's much easier than what is, they're trying to do right here in a, in a neighborhood that you've got homes of eight hundred thousand dollars.
The land has not been acquired. We are going through a feasibility study in order to make sure that this will be the area to go to. The feasibility study shows that we can do this in that area based on, on the outcome of tonight's meeting. Now, the investor is willing to say, if you guys don't approve of this, I mean, he's just gonna take this to somewhere else and build it somewhere else. And it might not be here in Brownsville. And in saying so, we, I mean.
You know, everybody threatens us with that. And I, get off that. Get off that.
No, it's not to get off of that. I mean, this is the future of Brownsville.
Mike, we have plenty of land in Brownsville.
We sit here, we sit here in this commission, and we say, we have to increase taxes because we don't have, you know, growth of Brownsville. Well, here's an investor coming in from out of town trying to invest money into Brownsville, and we're stopping it. What's going on?
So, yeah, we have to throw out the criteria out the window.
There's no criteria here. This is, this is an agreement that was done with another owner, not with this one.
Let me say something real quick, real quick. Leaving this subdivision, you're not going into a residential street where it's only a two-lane.
This is a state highway.
This is a state highway. There's six lanes. Now, the issue goes back to the, the issue goes back to this. The, and I've talked to some of the homeowners there. They're okay with ten to twelve. They weren't okay with fourteen. You're okay with ten. Is, is, let me ask you something. Would, would going to ten, Mike, keep this investor doing what he's doing here? Or, or it doesn't make sense because you won't make any money?
Well, the thing is, the return in your investment. I mean, how would you get your return in your investment allocated?
We don't know. You're the developer.
I'm sorry?
We, we don't know. You can only answer that question.
Well, exactly, and that's why we're here in front of you, asking for fourteen.
Right now, you don't have anything. And I think what the people behind you are telling you is that they're willing to go aside from what the mayor's thought about the same, you know. Basically, this is a two-and-a-half acre lot that was designed to hold one house. Okay, that's the way it was set up. And now, what we have is, you've got a group of homeowners that are saying, we're okay with you putting ten houses or ten condominiums there, and we're not gonna complain about it, and we're gonna allow that.
Okay, this is an agreement, if I may.
Well, I mean, that's what we have.
This is an agreement that you have with a previous owner. This is a completely new owner. It's being.
But you're, you're not even, you, you didn't even get a vote at planning and zoning.
I'm sorry?
You didn't even get a vote at planning and zoning. They didn't even vote on your issue.
David, what do you, what do you have to say about this? What do you have to say about this, David?
I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. My name is David Merrill. I live in the neighborhood there, and in fact, for many years, I lived inside the Green Block for many years. Next door to my father-in-law, who developed that piece of property and owned the property across the street. Uh, I have a couple of quick things that I'd like to remark about. The first is that you have genuine goodwill on the part of the folks out there. That, and that's a remarkable thing. That's, that's an important element in being able to negotiate this out. And as far as I can tell, you have people who are more than willing to sit down and discuss the various attributes of the property, and what will make it satisfactory for development in terms of the neighborhood as a whole. So that's, that's a rare occasion, I would say, when you have this available to you. The second thing is, I'm astonished. I, perhaps you, uh, know better than I, but I'm astonished that your Planning and Zoning Commission, first of all, uh, six weeks ago, uh, failed to make a quorum to be able to discuss this at all. And then, and two weeks ago, when they had their meeting, they didn't have, uh, the whatever it takes to make a decision, to, so that they could forward it to the city commission appropriately. So, you've got a situation where I think the best, if I may, the best alternative from the city commission is to direct that, uh, that there be some negotiation take place.
Well, I think that's where we're going.
One quick thing I'll say. There, there is, it is the fact that there is a residential neighborhood on both sides of this development property. If you have somebody, and, and by the way, I'm familiar with a piece of property on McAllen and Gilson Road. It is a very attractive piece of property. It's very nicely done. There's nothing wrong with. It's, it's too compact for me personally to want to live there, but it's, but it's understandable that it's an, architecturally, it's fine. You're talking about the difference here betw- between not just the number of square feet or the number of houses. You're talking about the number of people and vehicles that go into that place. And in the current, uh, configuration, they're not showing even a turnaround, much less secondary parking. It just, it isn't ready for prime time, is what it amounts to. And, and I would recommend, I would appreciate it if the commission would say, we're open to suggestion on this, but negotiation i- is the, is the best, uh, resolution.
I, I agree with you, and I was gonna recommend that, that you go get back with, uh, Ben and the parties.
Let me just say one last, one thing for the, for the commission as well. By, by coming here today and by going before the planner and zoning the last time, and agreeing that they can do this, even though it's residential, and even though the other owner didn't do anything. I mean, we've already given up quite a bit and said, look, guys, this place is residential, and we're gonna allow you to build ten places in there. We've done that already. And so we bent already backwards. Now, they have not made any effort at all to tell us, okay, they have this picture, that's it. What is this? And so, you know, I, I'm really getting a little bit tired of this thing because, you know, we went through all this, went through battle, we went through all these, and, and we did it for the community, not for myself. Because I don't know how long I'm gonna be there. I'm retired, and I'm still working a crazy, but, you know, uh.
You're too young to retire.
Yeah, yes. But in any event, uh, we, we've done a lot already. We've bent over backwards, and I know a lot of the commissioners here, they want progress, they want tax, they want to increase tax revenue and everything. We're all for that. We don't have a problem with that.
Well, Judge, I'm not against the progress. I am a little against people saying, you know, if you don't do this, you don't do it our way, we're gonna go, you know? I don't think that's the way to, to do business, but if y'all are willing to compromise and sit down with Ben as the middleman, with the developer to come up with a plan that can be approved by both of you, then bring it back, back, uh, to the commission, I think that would be ideal. I'm astonished that you all are willing to, to, to allow this, because I know the area very well. And I know the type and kind of, of, of development on both sides of, of that particular, uh, two-and-a-half acre lot. So, you know, I commend you all, but if it weren't me living there, I wouldn't even.
Well, we thought about that, uh, Mayor. We thought about just completely saying, you know what, we're back to the drawing board, and we're gonna object to anything you do. And we could have done that to these folks, but we had a, an agreement, we had a plan, we had all these ideas that were tossed around by a lot of very good people in that area. A lot of them have already passed away. It's in the past way, but we tried, and, and so, we, we wanted to leave it like, we don't have a problem with you doing that. We want progress. I like, I know the commissioners, we want to make sure we get a lot of tax money coming in. We're all hurting. The city's hurting, a lot of people are hurting. I understand that. I fully understand that. So, we're giving them already, here it is, guys.
I understand.
I'm gonna object to you, for you doing that, but now they, they haven't even, they don't care to even listen to that.
I understand. Senior Attorney, can we, excuse me, Senior Attorney, can we continue the public hearing to the next meeting? And, and that we, they don't have to reapply and pay the fee and do all that stuff?
Well, I mean, this is, this is an appeal. This is an appeal of a ruling, uh, lack of.
Yeah, but don't they have to reapply again?
May I, Mayor?
Sure.
You can continue the appeal to the next meeting.
Okay, okay.
Uh, just for the record right now, it is approved for twelve units. I mean, tomorrow, we start building on twelve units. We're fighting twelve to fourteen. According to Mr. Medina, we can. Mr. Mayor?
When it came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was approved for twelve. I think after that, they negotiated an agreement on their own, which we have no record, it was between themselves, for ten.
When it came to the Planning and Zoning Commission, at what time? Because what I understand is we're on appeal from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who failed to take action.
We're talking about the previous case. Right now, there is.
Which is a previous case, which is a previous owner, which is a entirely different entity.
But the, but the, but the application is approved for that site, for twelve. The application does not go when your ownership changes.
So where's that, Ben? But where's, where does it show that it's approved for twelve?
In, in our records, and, um.
Do we have a certified copy?
That's what we have before the city commission.
I would only ask, Mr. Mayor, then, it, it, that may be in dispute, uh, but having something approved six years ago, and then coming back and offering a plan that is substantially different from the plan that seems to have been approved then, is, is objectionable.
I mean, are they gonna follow the exact same guidelines of the, the plan that was done in two thousand and four?
You don't have a plan right now.
Well, that's the point. I mean, we're, what we, he's telling us now is that he has some sort of approval, so.
Please, Mr. Garza.
It was specific use. I kept quiet all this time. It was for specific use. If Mr. Pereira and Mr. Trevino, who is now the owner, and we, uh, we made an agreement, Mr. Trevino, Mr. Pereira, and this is the agreement we came to, okay? If they were able to build what we were showing you, the ten, then we agreed to have it changed to whatever zoning they needed. But if it could not be built, then the, then residential remains. That's why I keep hearing, no, it's residential, no, it's not. It is residential unless something happened over here.
No.
Like, something happened to the Richardson subdivision to, when we bought our property, single-family dwelling residential, and now all of a sudden, there's. Gee, I wonder how that happened. I'm sorry, I'm just, I cannot believe what happened.
Well, please have patience with this, okay? But let, let, let me say.
I'm a visiting mayor because I have the floor and.
Let me.
Let him finish talking, Mayor. Please.
I was, I was speaking, I was speaking. She, she spoke. I'm the chair. I allowed the lady to speak, and I was gonna respond to her. You're not, you're not, you're not chairing this meeting, so you're out of order.
Be quiet, let him talk.
I, I understood Mr. Pereira had sold his property. Is, is that true?
Do I not have the floor, Mayor?
Yeah, I will give you the floor in a minute, sir.
You don't let him talk.
I will, I, I'm the chair. I, I allow him the floor when I allow him the floor.
You're directing what you want directed.
As, Mr. Medina, is, is Mr. Pereira still the owner? Okay, so he's not the owner. So that agreement with Mr. Pereira is in Mr. Trevino? Because they're telling, they're saying one thing. They're saying, but what I'm hearing here is that the new owner's in Mexico City. And the, the old owner, I thought was Mr. Pereira and, and Mr. Trevino. What, the question I want to, uh, answered is, is the agreement with Mr. Pereira and Mr. Trevino still in effect? Does it run with this property? That's the question I have.
Mayor, that was an agreement between two private citizens. The city was not involved in that agreement.
So it does not run with the property, okay?
Go ahead, sir. And I apologize if my colleague here doesn't know who's governing this meeting.
No. Okay, second, um.
Six more months, Mayor.
Like you said, the, the agreement that was done between the parties, we have nothing to do with it. We, as a matter of fact, just came, we knew about it in the last meeting, but we have, we had nothing to do with that. Like they were saying, that Sony, either neighbor, uh, wants to sell the property tomorrow to us or to any other developer, they can go ahead and put twenty-five, I believe it's twenty-five apartments. And, you know, compared to fourteen that we wanna do, I mean, and there's, I believe, uh, five or six lots in there, they can go ahead and, you know, build a hundred apartments overnight, I guess. And second, I guess, or one of the main points is the traffic. Fourteen houses, or fourteen, uh, fourteen houses, I guess, uh, on Eight O Two. If Eight O Two can't support fourteen more houses, very little houses, I mean, streets in Brownsville are gonna be able to support that, so, I mean, we're going with this, I guess. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Mayor, I'm gonna make the motion to continue to the next meeting, and ask that both groups meet and work together to come up with a compromise, and I think it's a win-win for both of them. I think they just need to converse, and, and we'll go from there.
Just making a motion that, making a motion that be done through Ben.
And that Ben, you, you chair that, you chair that group?
One more point, sir. It's, the other townhouses that were built are three blocks away. So, you know, we do have the same scenario in the area, three blocks away. They were built by the same investor, Tres Rosas from D F.
Mr. Garza, I think your support, I think everybody's willing to help out.
I'm just wanting to make a point, Mayor. That's all.
It's just, it's just the, it's just the amount.
Thank you.
Okay? Just the amount. So I think, uh, continue the public hearing is the best way to help these developers out, and also, uh, uh, work with the neighborhood. So we got a motion and a second.
Question. How many units are in that, the one that's built, sixteen, sixteen units? Where in the vicinity of how many feet?
About a three, four block area.
Well, it's, 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 it's more than that. It's, it's, it's right on the corner of, uh, McAllen Road, Gilson Road and McAllen Road. It's a, it's about a half a mile, a half a mile.
But I think the question is, is how large a lot are those sixteen homes located on? It's a two-and-a-half acre lot.
It's the same plot. It's just a duplication. That's why he was interested in the.
The differences in the makeup of the neighborhood here is the higher value.
It, it, it's a little bit dense. The, the configuration of the lot is a little bit different.
I got a question.
The configuration's different on the lot.
The higher value of the neighborhood compared to the others.
Ben, real quick, so, just so I can be, so I can make sure, twelve, twelve houses were approved by when? Planning and zoning approved twelve, when?
No, what, what was it dated at? Two thousand four?
Two thousand four, so that legally, I don't know, Mark, legally, do these people have a right to build twelve that they want or not?
There is a, there is a specific use approved by the city commission.
And they have a right to use that?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
They did that before the city commission. The agreement, it never came before the city commission. We, we withdrew, our view, before the city commission, before we got to the city commission, because we resolved the issue.
I understand.
Planning and zoning approved that, and approved twelve units, and we followed the view of that. And then we, we sat again, we discussed the issue, and then we arrived at ten units. There's no sixteen. It never approved by the city commission back then.
If I. Well, and that's, that raises another issue, Judge Garcia, and then the other question that comes into the light there is, if you, if twelve were submitted, you withdrew your objection at that point. Did the city take action to approve the twelve? And I'm not sure, and I think that's something you need to research.
I, I think that, yeah, well, maybe, maybe so, but the agreement, because of the agreement we entered into, we allowed, in fact, we had an agreement after the meeting, we were gonna send down one, it was only eighteen units, and.
And you withdrew it.
We withdrew, we appealed. You know what? We don't even know.
So then what we need to find out was action taken by the city commission to approve what was.
I don't know if that.
And I don't know either, so maybe you might want to look at that.
And I'll go over with that with them. We have the dates, and we can get the specific coordinates, and we can all discuss.
Okay, we have a motion here to continue the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion here to continue the public hearing, a second, we got a second.
And you'll sit down and work it out and then bring it back, okay?
Can I just say one other thing, uh, Mark, please? This is, I'll be, I'll finish here, I mean, I know I talk a lot, it's a bit. As I've told the commission, we have, if they're taking the position that they're not, we dealt with the power owner, and this is not the new, this is, they're, they're unbound by that, then we're gonna take the position, and I'll tell you right now, we're gonna take the position that this is residential and we're not gonna agree to anything. So, I want that known to these new owners because, I mean, if we work hard to do this thing and we came forward to this commission, or we're asking to, for this, we're allowing them to do these things, we worked hard to do that, in spite of the fact that it's a single-family dwelling, uh, unit, uh, area, and now they're gonna say, well, if the other guy didn't approve it, it's, it's not binding on us, but wait a minute, well, we got twelve units. Well, how can that be, how can that be so? In violation of that, if that's fact that was filed, approved by the city commission, they're in violation of that agreement.
So noted, it's in the record, and I won't argue with you, you're a judge, former judge and attorney, so then y'all can go at it. But I, I'm hoping that y'all get together and work it out, so it doesn't come here. Does that make sense? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you, all, and work at it. Next item?
Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero twenty-three to rezon from dwelling Z to general retail G for lot four, block one of El Harvín resubdivision, located at two twenty-eight North Minnesota Avenue, Brownsville, Texas.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, in this specific case, uh, they wanna have a, a general store in this location on Minnesota. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing.
Would it close?
Second.
We have a motion to close, public hearing in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is the next item?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion approved, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero twenty-four to rezon from general retail F to light, light commercial F, block twenty of tract thirty-three of El Harvín resubdivision, share nineteen Espirito Santo Grant, located at twenty-six hundred Old Port Isabel Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, uh, this is, uh, an application, the area is shaded in red. This is for a mini, uh, storehouse, storage units. Uh, the planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve, recommend, uh, this application to you.
This is the public hearing.
Would it close?
Second.
We have a motion to close, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, the next item?
Would it approve?
We have a motion approved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item fourteen?
Item fourteen, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero twenty-five to rezon from dwelling G to apartment G for block twenty-seven of El Harvín subdivision, located, said, shared nineteen, located at forty twenty-five Coffee Port Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, in this property here, um, the planning zoning commission voted unanimously to, uh, recommend approval. You see in the map, that's the area shaded in red, uh, is for apartment use. Uh, recommend approval.
Okay, this is the public hearing, anybody for or against? If not, can have a motion to close?
So move.
We have a motion to close, can have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is the next item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion approved, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, public comments, do we have any public comments?
You have.
Sorry, it's item, um, eighteen.
Sixteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Item eighteen, consideration in action to award the medical insurance specific stop-loss, stop-loss contract to the stop-loss insurance carrier.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, the city of Brownsville for several years has had a self-funded insurance, medical insurance program. What we do every year is we buy, for protection, we buy stop-loss. And this is what this is tonight, we're, uh, asking you to award a contract to a reinsurance carrier. Very briefly, uh, there it is. Advertising was placed in the Brownsville Herald, announcing the stop-loss, uh, RFP process in July fourteenth and July sixteenth of this year. T M L I E P P, who is the third-party administrator for the city, received a total of ten responses to the stop-loss RFP. There were eight quotes and two declinations. Uh, the quote, we are recommended is from the I N G, our current reinsurance carrier that covers medical and prescription costs with a twelve fifteen contract. These are claims that, that are incurred twelve months and paid in fifteen. The quote, uh, has a specific deductible of a hundred and seventy-five thousand and an aggregated specific deductible of a hundred and fifty thousand. The specific means that the city takes the financial responsibility up to the first a hundred and seventy-five thousand of an individual claim. Once the a hundred and seventy-five thousand is met, the excess dollars, we will accumulate to the aggregating specific of a hundred and fifty. The aggregating specific may consist of multiple covered individuals in excess dollars over a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Once the accumulation of dollars is in the excess of a hundred and fifty thousand, the reinsurance carrier begins refunding eligible claims to the city. There are four lasers, which means the employer, meaning us, takes the financial responsibility up to the laser amount for the individuals identifying, identified as be, as being high risk. And right now, we do have, uh, four claims, uh, that are considered, uh, or four individuals or, that are considered high risk. So those carry your higher deductible. The monthly fixed premium cost for the specific and the aggregate coverage remained flat for two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven stop-loss contract period. The, this particular slide shows you how the city has fared, uh, the last several years, beginning with two thousand and four all the way to two thousand and nine. On the first column, you'll see the two thousand and four, uh, premiums that were paid by the city for, uh, this particular insurance. We paid four hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven eighty-eight, uh, because we exceeded some of the specifics during that year. We had refunds of hundred, six hundred and one thousand. So in reality, the city gained, uh, a hundred and two thousand four eighty-three, meaning that, that the refunds exceeded the, the premiums. And that was under the core insurance, uh, monumental insurance. In two thousand and five, Allianz, uh, took a beating, they, they actually had paid out, uh, more than what they had received in claim, in, in premiums. So we fared very well in two thousand and five, uh, meaning that we had refunds of one million four sixty-five and we only had premiums of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. As we move along to two thousand and six, uh, we did see a difference of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, meaning that's how much the stop-loss in effect cost us for, for this, uh, insurance. In two thousand and seven, we gained three hundred and five thousand, and, and during this time, we had fidility insurance as they, as, as the, uh, insurance for the stop-loss. Two thousand and eight, uh, we wind up actually paying five hundred and eight, five hundred and sixty-six thousand out of, uh, potential six hundred and twenty thousand premium. And then in two thousand and nine, uh, we actually had, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars that we paid in, in premiums. So, uh, over a, a six-year period, we'll see a, a clause, we had a gain of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, meaning that we, we were, uh, again, when we purchase stop-loss, we wanna make sure that, uh, we, uh, we cover some of those high-risk claims, and that's the reason why we buy stop-loss insurance. Again, because the city of Brownsville is strictly a self-funded program. We keep, if anything that we, that, that, uh, if the claims are, are low, obviously, we keep those funds. Whereas if you were a fully insured, anything that goes, that, all the premiums that you pay, even though maybe your claims are less, you're still, the, the, you know, it's the insurance company keeps that money. We keep whatever is left over.
They keep what?
In other words, when you have a fully insured, insurance, uh, program, you pay a premium. Let's say you pay premiums of like six hundred thousand, uh, well, this is a stop-loss. Uh, I'll say that you, you pay premiums in excess of, let's say, ten million dollars, and you had claims of nine million. That means that the insurance company gained over you, uh, by a, by a million dollars. In our case, since, since we're self-funded, whatever is left over is kept in our fund. And, and that, that's, that's, that's the difference between the self-funded and the, and the fully insured. And we've also found out that we are better off, uh, based on certain studies that we've done in the past, that the city of Brownsville is better off with a self-funded program instead of a fully insured program, because the fully insured program would be very expensive for us.
What do we pay for the stop-loss?
In this case, we're gonna be, uh, recommended that we award the contract to I N G. I N G is the.
What is, what's the cost? What's the cost of the city?
Okay, the, uh, the, the, the cost is, um, the total premiums that we'll be paying. Total cost would be nine hundred and thirty thousand.
How much?
Nine hundred and thirty thousand.
Nine hundred and thirty thousand.
But the premium, the, the, I mean, if you include all the, all the costs, uh, the, the monthly liability or the, uh, monthly cost, if we, if we go with the, with them, um, uh, okay, that, that, I'm talking about, there's other costs associated with that, and that's the maximum cost that we would be paying. The maximum cost that we would be paying is nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Because there are some, uh, lasers that are, that are built in, and those are, see, in a, in a, in a, in a self-funded program, you don't know exactly how much your cost is gonna be, all we're gonna be paying for is a premium. At the end of the year, when all the claims are paid, that's when you determine what your total cost is. But, uh, the, uh, the total premium, uh, right now, the monthly premium will be about, uh, about twelve thousand, eight, eighty-three thousand dollars.
As of today, from January to now?
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's per, per month. So we recommend that you approve the contract to I N G.
This is an action item?
Would it approve?
Second.
We have a motion approved, in a second, and for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item nineteen?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Barretta has asked that we read item number one first, which deals with the budget, before we continue with nineteen and twenty. Honorable Mayor, City Commission. Uh, Delina, let me, let me read the items, please. Item twenty-one is consideration in action in regards to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation's fiscal year two thousand and eleven budget.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this is the workshop that I presented earlier regarding the budget and also then the two different contracts that are associated with this budget.
Would it approve?
Second.
So we have a motion approved, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I'll extend it.
I'll say nay.
Item nineteen.
What, what's that?
Nay.
You got one nay, an extension?
Just one?
Make, make that mine a nay, two nays and, uh, forty-eight. Six.
Item nineteen, consideration in action to authorize Mr. Charlie Cabler, city manager, to execute the Brownsville Sports Park Maintenance Agreement with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
Okay, uh, you just got to leave it.
Again, this is, as discussed in the workshop, this is the Sports Park Maintenance Agreement that the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation has with the, uh, with the city of Brownsville in order to maintain the sports park.
Would it approve?
We have a motion approved, in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Are there any, were there all, uh, approved? Was there any nays? Okay.
I wasn't allowed to say more than that.
Item twenty, consideration in action to authorize Charlie Cabler, city manager, to execute the service agreement with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
And again, this is the contract that Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation has with the city of Brownsville in order to provide administrative services for the B C I C board.
Would it approve?
Second, we have a motion approved, in a second, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three?
Item twenty-two, consideration in action on resolution number two thousand and ten dash zero sixty to authorize the closure of Southmost Boulevard for the eleventh annual Veterans Day Parade.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion approved, in a second.
General.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Very eloquent.
Item twenty-three, consideration in ac, consideration in action to authorize the city of Brownsville to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council for a donation of a, of an R A D fifty-seven monitor equipment valued at three thousand five hundred and four dollars and fifty cents to the city of Brownsville.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this is a R A D fifty-seven, it measures, uh, carbon monoxide, uh, levels of patients and also our firefighters in hazardous, uh, atmospheres. Uh, this was secured by a grant by, um, Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council for the big cities in the valley, we're recipients of one of them.
Would it approve?
Second.
We have a motion approved, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, item twenty-four?
Item twenty-four, consideration in action to authorize the city of Brownsville to enter into a contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish ambulance and emergency medical services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designated by zone number one of the official fire protection service zone map of the Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, uh, the E S D District Number One is offering two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents for this fiscal year, that's about a thirty thousand dollar increase from last year. Staff is recommending approval of the, of the contract. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the, of the contract.
Would it approve?
Yeah, yeah, motion approved, can I, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, you excited?
Item number twenty-five, consideration in action on resolution number twenty-ten dash zero sixty-two for an interlocal agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Housing Authority.
Honorable mayor, city commissioners, um, this, this is, um, only a, um, to authorize an interlocal agreement between the city of Brownsville and, uh, Brownsville Housing. They wanna piggyback on our contract with, uh, uh, Estrada and the Hossen Company for financial advising services.
Would it approve?
Um, yeah, motion approved, can I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twenty-six?
Item twenty-six, consideration in action to encumber or to carry over thirty thousand dollars of the Brownsville Beautification Committee's fiscal year two thousand ten unspent funds to fiscal year two thousand eleven, to encumber or carry over one hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars of Brownsville Public Library's fiscal year two thousand ten unspent funds to fiscal year two thousand eleven, and to encumber or ca, or carry over sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars of traffic signal improvements from fiscal year two thousand ten unspent funds to fiscal year two thousand eleven.
Would it approve?
Second.
Yeah, motion approved, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item twenty-seven?
Item twenty-seven, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of building supplies for the Brownsville Planning Department.
Honorable mayor, city commissioners, the staff, recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of building supplies for the planning and community development department to Lowe's of Brownsville, Texas, a low responsive bidder, at the simulated prices on the tab sheet. Uh, this contract for building supplies will go towards the construction of twenty homes, uh, in a subsequent award by city commission at a later time. Uh, funding for this procurement comes from, from the T D H C A, uh, Disaster Recovery Program Account, money is in place, and Planning and Community Development Department concurs with this recommendation.
Okay, this is a action item?
Would it approve?
Second.
Yeah, motion approved, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert. Uh, I wanna make an announcement, we, I don't know, uh, we, we get a lot of calls with the flooding, uh, sewage backing up and stuff like that, and there's some issues with the resacas, so I'm gonna ask for a meeting with all the irrigation districts, uh, P U P, and, uh, the engineer of the city, and public works, to come together and develop a strategic plan to make sure that we're trying, we have a system in place that will absorb the waters as quick as possible and drain as quickly as possible. Even though we've done very good, there's some issues, like some resacas are not connecting with one another, and it's kinda, uh, making it bad in certain areas of town, like tradition states, where the resaca on the west side of Paredes Line Road, uh, I think it's probably the cities, nobody knows, uh, there are some issues there, and it doesn't connect with the resaca on the east side of the street, and we need to get the, the irrigation district to figure out a way, uh, to, to, to make that happen. Also, uh, that same resaca, developers were supposed to do certain things, uh, putting a pipe underneath where it connects, and it wasn't done, and now that it rains so hard, it's created some problems, so I'm gonna try to, uh, get everybody together to come up with a strategic plan that will alleviate, uh, these problems to where we can handle the flooding a little better, because it brought out some issues that need to be addressed, so I wanna let the citizens know that we are working to address these concerns, uh, because I know there are major concerns, and nobody thinks about them until it starts pouring, and then it's really late, so, I wanted to make that announcement. It'll be in about two weeks where I'll bring the, uh, irrigation districts, public works, engineers, P U P, and city together to address these, these areas of concern. Can I have a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Some more?
Can I have a s, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.